Twenty twenty second, twelve o'clock, uh, right, State Council. First, please stand and join me in the pledge of leisures.
Pledge of leisures.
To the flag. The United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda is approved minutes from May second.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is hearing public's concerns. Uh, see none. Uh, number three is parklets.
Handout.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. I think I know everyone here, but I'm Amy Miller, President and CEO of the Bryan Area Foundation. And back in March of two thousand and twenty, the Bryan Area Foundation started a new strategic planning process. And through that, the foundation decided that we wanted to be more proactive in a response to community needs. So where in the past, we would have waited for community members or nonprofits to come before us with an idea, um, and then grant them money to go fulfill that, that idea. We're now seeking out, um, things that we see as opportunities for improving the community on our own and going ahead and making some of those projects possible. So out of that, one of the big objectives that the foundation members identified and wanted to address is really revitalizing downtown Bryan. So we, uh, admit, we hired Small Nation, which is a consultant out of Belle Fountain, Ohio, which is just outside Columbus, and they've done a phenomenal job revitalizing their downtown area. Uh, they've come here, they've given us some suggestions, and one of those quick and easy suggestions for revitalizing a small town is to add parklets or exciting outdoor areas. So that's what I bring before you today. So what is a parklet? So it is a public seating platform that converts curbside parking spaces into vibrant community spaces. They're also known as street seats or curbside seating. Uh, most of them have the opportunity to be able to dine in some capacity. Some have games and things in them. The one that we've designed for Bryan will simply be a seating area that could be used for, uh, dining or just visiting with one another. We also think it could be a great way to utilize the DORA that's in place. Um, it actually, a parklet actually originated, um, and the first one was installed in San Francisco in around two thousand and ten that we're aware of in the U.S. Now, sure, there was probably some kind of informal, but the term parklet, uh, kind of originated there. Um, it's now in a lot, almost nearly all major U.S. cities in terms of, in Ohio, I know that there are parklets in Bowling Green, Athens, Ohio, Columbus, and Cleveland, just to name a few places. So why should we allow parklets in Bryan? They encourage social engagement and build a sense of community. They're actually an economic driver for growth because those open and shared spaces bring foot traffic to downtown areas. Parklets increase visibility of downtown businesses by resting out in front and not taking up actual parking, I'm sorry, not using that with cars. They also create character and enhance aesthetics, and they're a very inexpensive solution for downtown revitalization. So where we're looking at putting a parklet today is on the west side of the square. Uh, that, that particular street has a little less traffic than some of the other sides, um, and so we really like that for a safety perspective as well. Um, we've actually talked to some of the business owners along there, and they were all very exciting and engaged. In fact, Cora has basically begged us to say, please put it right in front of my building because we can absolutely utilize it. They actually oftentimes run out of seating, so it's a wonderful way that people can, um, really kind of extend Cora outward. And as you can imagine, when we have band concerts and we have great events like we did last night with the chocolate walk, a great place for families and friends to just gather outdoors during the summer months. So yous can see the parklet rendering there. Um, I am working with Doug Swords, has agreed to build the parklets for us. Um, he was the same builder that we use for the Kris Kendall Market stalls. And the piece that's, you can see, kind of erected up above will actually be separate, and that will be, um, actually like galvanized, a, a nice heavy frame. And Paul Rigg from PR Weld has agreed to create that structure. So that'll be in two places, so we don't always have to use the canopy. Um, we, we can make decisions about when and when we do not want to use it. Um, it does also have some flower boxes in the back. Um, and Doug would love to have some direction from anyone in regards to, uh, what types of flowers they would have preferred, or if the city's gonna help participate in keeping them watered or growing, that you would have some participation in that as well. So the Bryan Area Foundation would cover all costs for this. Um, and Cora would like to be the first location, as I mentioned. And in terms of ownership of the actual structure itself, um, the Bryan Development Foundation, which is an area nonprofit, is willing to be gifted this once we build it and create it. So today I come before you to ask for your approval to move forward with the construction and placement of this parklet on Bryan streets directly in front of Cora. Um, the last thing I wanted to show you is, um, just two small things. The structure that is, was originally designed was to be done in wood, but in working with Doug Swords, he highly recommended that we use more of a polywood type, so that, this is actually what we would move forward with. The reason being, this is much more durable. Um, if it gets a milkshake spilled on it, it's gonna be easier to hose off, it's not going to stain or heaven forbid somebody spray paint or do something to it, it's gonna be much easier to clean off. Um, the other thing that Doug suggested that we do, that we would like to do is actually, we're gonna build it in three sections. So we had originally talked about having to have, um, it'd be a pretty significant move in with like a, a loader, but having it in three sections will make it much easier to move as well. So with that, I come before you to see what your thoughts are.
Yeah, I just want to add one thing too. You know, we've been talking about this since pre-COVID. And back in the day, uh, we had Bowling Green's ordinances and legislation where, you know, it was basically the business or somebody else would own it rather than the city, and that's what we're back at again. We're back at the original Bowling Green, looking at something similar to those, that legislation, uh, in a couple of weeks to come back to you with. So this is not really, you know, asking for approval for her to build these per se, but kind of giving us direction on whether you guys feel this is warranted, that we should pursue drafting the legislation and get it back at the next meeting to where, again, the city won't own it, uh, the Bryan Development Foundation will own it. So, you know, our liability will be pretty minimal in it. So, you know, I know we've talked back and forth on what the ownership was, but, uh, Amy's worked pretty hard on, uh, trying to get the proper ownership of it and get liability situated around. So I just want you all to know that it's back similar to the Bowling Green legislation, and that's what, if you guys like that, we'll proceed with that, come back to you at the next meeting with something along that line. So I just wanted to add that in there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
First of all, this one has a canopy, correct?
Yes.
What happens if there's a storm? You're responsible for that repair if that gets damaged?
Yes. I mean, we're, we're gonna pay for the upfront cost, um, and I wouldn't leave BDF responsible for if it needed a repair. They could come back to us and be able to help with that.
How many parking spaces, the one you're going to have built for in front of Cora?
I think it's two, maybe. Two to three, it just depends.
Okay.
And the angled parking makes it a little bit trickier.
This comes out in the wintertime, right?
Yes, so it'll be very strictly seasonal. So it would go in typical years in the spring and come out in the fall before, uh, come out sometime in the fall before the snow flies, because we understand there could be an issue with snow plows.
Okay.
This particular one, if we can have it built in place, we would like to do so yet this summer. And Doug believes he can do so if we are allowed to.
Okay, thank you.
So Amy, did it go back to your flowers question?
Yeah.
I believe when we initially had the conversation a few months ago, um, Ben and April did agree that they would provide the flowers. Um, and I'll have to double check with the chamber because the last time I had a conversation with, um, Director Yarris, he was in agreement that whoever was paid to water the flowers along the square would help with that maintenance of that as well, because that's not something the city does during those months.
And then in terms of daily maintenance, so if a bird has an accident or there is a spill, I mean, if it's in front of Cora, they're going to take care of it as well.
Sure.
And then if it's a major issue, like you mentioned Judy, something actually more significant happens and there needs to be a repair or replacement, we would help the Bryan Development Foundation cover those expenses. We wouldn't leave it up to them.
And BMU feels, I guess, I shouldn't speak for you Derek and Nathan, but I think you feel you have the equipment to be able to move it in a easy, simple, safe way?
If it's fine, I'm not, I can move it for that.
Yeah, and Doug would be more than amicable to have you come out to the job saying you can talk through some of those things too. So you could actually feel it that way.
I'm all right with moving forward with it. Everybody else is.
I think it'd be fun and interesting.
I think it's a great idea.
So if there's no further discussion, is there further discussion from council?
Just wait for the legislation.
That's, yeah, well, that's what we wanted to know, should we move forward with legislation? And then the, the permit that Bowling Green had. I'm assuming BDF made the law, actually.
Okay. So next steps from my end, what do I need to do?
Uh, Rhonda, did you put the permit in City of Bryan format, the one that you had initially gotten from Bowling Green, or had that been done yet, the permit?
I have the permit ready for the City of Bryan, yes, but that legislation, because I do want the direction.
Sure. So the legislation will be drafted as soon as council passes that, we can get you the permit. Um, do you think the next council meeting, Rhonda, or no, for the legislation?
So what would the timing of that be? Just because we obviously need to be able to build to get it out there yet this summer.
Potentially two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
You can start building it now if you want, Amy. I mean, you. You don't want me building it, it would not, it would not go well.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is the Clerk Treasuries Court. Pat, would you number three?
Compulsions presented with the Clerk Treasuries Court for the month ending April thirty, two thousand and twenty.
I move to accept.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Number five is a resolution. Pat, would you please number read?
Resolution number twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the chief of police of the City of Bryan to apply for and manage grants associated with the Ohio criminal justice system for body worn cameras for the City of Bryan as needed.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
I would like permission to research and possibly apply for the OCGS body worn camera grant. The applications are due by October eighth.
How many?
Uh, be one for every officer.
Okay, good, good.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Are you not, are you?
I'm, I'm.
Uh, number six is a resolution. Pat, would you please number read?
Resolution number twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution authorizing fire chief and the police chief of the City of Bryan to apply on behalf of the City of Bryan for a grant under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, for first responder wellness, recruitment, retention, resiliency funds, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, council, so again, we are, Chief Poole and I are requesting permission to research and possibly apply for the ARPA grant. This is for first responders, wellness, recruitment, retention, and resilience and funds. At the deadline for this grant is also June seventeenth of this year.
I move to suspend.
John?
Yeah.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Item number seven is a resolution. Pat, would you please number read?
Resolution number thirty, two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution that the County of Williams and the City of Bryan enter into the two thousand and twenty-two partnership agreement of the Maumee Valley North Chip Consortium.
Counsel, this is an annual resolution that we asked for, for the chip program, um, and the request comes from Maumee Valley.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I have number eight is a resolution. Pat, would you please number read?
Resolution number thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution to authorize the mayor to accept a grant of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission for the construction of pedestrian pathways and pathway lighting near the Fountain City Amphitheater.
Counsel, um, we have been awarded through the state capital dollars, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and I would like to thank, Miss, uh, State Representative Jim Hoops and Senator Rob McCauley, and also our Parks Director Ben Dominic for their work on securing this grant funding. It will allow us, upon your approval, to accept those dollars and add more pedestrian pathways out by the amphitheater and rec park, as well as additional lighting.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I have number nine is a resolution. Pat, would you please number read?
Resolution number thirty-two, two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution providing for the establishment of a new fund.
Anybody? This, yeah.
No.
Oh, it's not.
This is for the One Ohio Fund.
So, could you read that?
For the, sorry. Um, yes, therefore, it resolves City of Bryan, Ohio majority members elected concurrent to provide for the revenue expenditures of certain funds for the City of Bryan. The volume fund is hereby established, One Ohio Opiate Fund, number two fourteen. And if I understand right, it's the monies that were received from the settlement.
Yep. Sorry about that.
I move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Move to it, John.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number ten is a resolution. Pat, would you please number read?
Resolution number thirty-three, two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution to accept a donation of two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars from Airmaid Company, Inc., for construction of a water line to extend into Airmaid Company, Inc.
Good afternoon, counsel.
Good afternoon.
Um, at our last, uh, Board of Public Affairs meeting, we ended up passing a few resolutions to deal with this same thing. And tonight we're, or this afternoon, we're asking that you follow suit to accept the donation of two hundred and forty-five thousand, uh, what is it? Two hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the airmaid, uh, water line extension. And, uh, and a follow-up to the later one would just be to appropriate that money into our water capital fund. And I appreciate you guys expediting this and, uh, working with us to, you know, move government as fast as, as we can move, and which we have done. And I appreciate all your efforts to make this happen.
I move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number eleven is an ordinance. Pat, would you please number read?
This is ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand and twenty-two. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the City of Bryan for the month ending May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. This is the transfer of funds to the one percent income tax fund, two oh two, of four hundred thousand dollars to the general fund, one oh one, for general operating expenses. And a transfer of funds from the truly revolving loan fund of fifty thousand dollars to the five twenty-five water capital reserve fund for the water project.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number twelve is an ordinance. Pat, would you please number read?
Ordinance number thirty-three, two thousand and twenty-two. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the City of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, and declaring an emergency. This is for the appropriation into the five twenty-five water cap reserve fund for the airmaid water line extension of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is a building permit.
Good afternoon. Uh, today I have the building permit for the Airmaid Company, their addition they're doing, uh, located at one six two eight zero, County Road D. Stephen Howard Construction will be doing the work. State construction type is two B, state use group is B, F one and S one. Cost for the addition is one million, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, this is a twenty-five thousand, six hundred square foot addition. So they received their partial last year and got stuff in last year, but they finally got their final from the state, so.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, go around the room. Audience, anybody? Just want to generalize this. Rhonda, anything? Okay, John?
Yeah, I just want to thank Airmaid for their continued investment in Bryan, and also, um, I'm not sure how much, um, people know the evolution of this, but also want to thank BMU and their expertise, um, from, and working with them, Nate, their engineering and all the different facets that they went through, um, uh, to help find solutions. And that, I think that was very helpful and very cooperative. There was more than just government expedition, there was, uh, expertise given, uh, from, uh, BMU, and I wanted to make sure that was recognized and appreciated. Um, also to the Bryan Area Foundation for their many, uh, many community investments, not the least of which, of course, every year, everyone knows about the, uh, scholarship program and money, but also all the different things, like the parklets and working with the Bryan Development Foundation, et cetera. Um, I wanted to make sure that they were also recognized and they do an outstanding job, uh, Amy and, uh, the entire staff. And that's it.
Hey, John, Judy?
I also want to say thank you to Airmaid and, uh, again, BMU, all those that were involved in that, because like John said, it was quite an undertaking. I also want to thank, um, all those involved for the parklets. I think this is gonna be fun and an interesting thing that's gonna help our downtown. I want to also thank all those involved that helped with the new pathways out of the amphitheater. If you haven't been out past the amphitheater, it looks beautiful. Um, you need to go out and see that. And the other, last thing I have is everybody, please stay safe over the moon.
Thank you. Rick?
Uh, don't have a whole lot to add. I do, uh, want to thank Bryan Area Foundation. I think parklets are something that are, hopefully, the beginning of, of more to come as far as development of, of an exciting and fun downtown area. They have great downtown, and, uh, I think this would be a great addition. And I also want to thank Airmaid for their investment in Bryan, and, uh, also all the work that, uh, BMU has used, has, has put into this to make it happen.
Thank you. Mary?
I'm gonna ditto everyone and keep it short since I have to get back to work, but I am gonna also say that, um, don't forget spring flings tomorrow from ten to two downtown. Thank you.
First, I want to thank council. I know many of you are either in the middle of your vacation or a work day, and so I appreciate you guys agreeing to come, um, specifically for this airmaid project. It's greatly appreciated. Um, I also want to announce the-
We would only do this for Nate.
Yeah.
I thought you were here for Bryan. I don't know. Um, so Get the Scoop is gonna be out at the Interactive Fountain on Sunday from two to four, so feel free to join that dedication. Um, that was, I believe, solely funded, again, through Bryan Area Foundation and the Isaac family. And they just installed new swings, um, adult swings. So, Miss Yarris, when you're on your walk, go check it out. We actually let someone check it out, so they're dry and everything. Um, I want to thank all the employees. The last two weeks have been really hairy here with dealing with states and permits and EPA, and everybody has really risen to the occasion, and I'm appreciative. With that, I wish you all a happy Memorial Day. I will still probably be crying because I have-